On that, and then if there are questions or if there are several, then I could just suggest and say there are several that, you know, we may want to have a conversation about and maybe the Policy Committee.
Arrange that. Take a look at the Finance meeting's round budget in preparation.
That's my only concern is if we start to get to the point where budget bogged down time, like we may need an extra meeting to help prepare stuff.
Well, if we go to, how did the board like last year? We have the budget workshops that were separate from the meeting and that gave you more time again. And it wasn't perfect because that was my first year, but I tried to present you with information ahead of time.
That was good.
And rationale ahead of time. You had time to take a look at it. Then at Budget Workshop, we had no other business for, for new members. We had no other business. It was just a workshop only to really talk about whatever was on the table. And we broke it down into different components at first. So instead, and we, the Finance Committee kind of donated that time. Whereas previously, that was done in a regular meeting, which was very long period.
Yeah, it's a lot to take on. The way we broke it down into the workshops with the different components, it's something you can digest. You can look at it ahead of time. You sit and listen to what everybody's looking at. You have time to digest and then you look into the next component, the next meeting. So it gave us time to, to build that budget.
Right, and everything was still on the table previously, but we built. We built the budget so you, so you could see how, how the different components worked and how they influenced the whole budget. So, you know, we'll keep that in mind as we move forward. But that, I think, I agree at the budget time, we definitely want to have enough time.
There may be a CapEx.
What?
The, the building project. I think there would be need for that to be separate? Or do you think that could fall within this, the scope of this, this meeting?
So, I don't know. I was not here at the onset of the previous project. But there are project updates that will occur. I'm not sure if those were shared. So those would be shared with you along the way. You could have a subcommittee.
So typically what happened was, if I remember correctly, they would give like an update every week. The construction company or the management company gave kind of an update and that was shared with the board each week as to what we were, where we were in the process. And then if there were decisions that had to be made or whatever, then they would ask us, they'd send us the information and ask us to make those decisions at meetings. So it kind of just, they'd give you the overview of what's happening each week as it gets going.
And I would say that if something was necessary, if it was necessary to have a lengthy discussion, then we would possibly schedule a special meeting. So for example, we're having that special meeting on October 11th so that the Bond Council can come in. There's time for, we'll have the architect here, the manager. There'll be time for questions. And again, we don't have to feel it gets rushed because we have the rest of the business meeting. So when needed, we could do that as well.
And I was on the board at the very beginning of the capital project. So I think that a lot of that work is not board work. It's a lot of waiting for the plans and specifications and going through the state. So I wouldn't even anticipate that we would have to take more active role until it actually was getting much closer to our start date.
And really, those updates were just informational updates.
And they weren't necessary at times too, so.
No.
So, but we can figure out what it is that we would like to see.
Yeah.
We do have time for that. So are people comfortable moving forward with Julie making that information available to us? We can see whether we want to handle it in that fashion? And if then anybody, anytime anybody wants to have it moved over to a committee conversation prior to action?
Yeah.
At the groups. So we'll do that.
Okay.
Sounds good. But for now, we'll leave the committees on the agenda just to remind ourselves that work is, is ongoing.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, I, we do have a lot of action items. They're difficult to combine because it's difficult to search if we combine them. So there's a lot of motions and actions. So, excuse me as I record. So moving on to our personnel. Entertained a motion to authorize the superintendent of school, Julie Adams, to enter into an agreement. Spolking Services from an LCSW dash R to supervise Erin and Tal. LMSW. Yes. So license, I think. So, just to give you a little. Sorry, got a little, a little ahead of myself. So this is, so right now, so LC is a licensed counselor, social worker. So licensed for counseling. And so you must have the C credential in order to bill Medicaid for services that are available. And if, in order to bill, when you do not have the C, you must be supervised. Because we're a small district, we don't have a second social worker. So in some districts and larger districts, for example, they might have three or four social workers. So if one needs to be supervised, one of the other social workers would have the, most likely have the credential to supervise them so that they're able to bill Medicaid. So in the short term, we'll supervise. We are looking and speaking with the Teachers Union, WADA, to offer that this may be something that I believe it's 2,500 hours. So it's quite expensive for a social worker to take that on themselves and a lot of people do do that. But we're hoping to come to a mutual agreement so that would benefit Ms. Natal as well if she would like to acquire her C credentials. So, but in the meantime, we have not been billing since January and we've kind of foregone a significant amount of money. In the meantime, I'm trying to kind of work through that, but. So we're just going to, we do have someone. We don't want to lose this person. There are not a lot of people, social workers out there to begin with, but I want someone who could supervise. So just working on the final agreement.
Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the retirement payout, sick days and incentive for BCL Perkins as presented. Someone. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to amend the previous action taken for Nancy Williamson's appointment on August 16, 2023. Nancy Williamson's start date should be amended from September 1st, 2023 to July 12, 2023. And her probationary end date should be amended from August 31st, 2026 to July 11th, 2026. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to accept the resignation of Madison Hunt from her teacher aide position effective September 5th, 2023. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. All those in favor. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement for Susan Neal from her teacher aide position effective September 1st, 2023.
So moved.
Motion by Peter. All those in favor. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Susan Neal as a clerical substitute effective September 1st, 2023. All those in favor. Motion carry five zero. Susan will be able to continue as.
Yes.
What does that stand in position?
Yes, tax collector. So. And she is also, she's tax collector and also the extracurricular fund auditor as well. So this was just from the full-time teacher aide position. And she, yes, she'll be part-time.
So she's identified, did we identify her at the organizational?
Yes.
So we, we don't have to, to take any of these?
No. Just the substitute.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the retirement payout, sick days and incentive for Susan Neal as presented. Someone. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
And all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the substitute teacher appointment of Lucy Franhofer effective September 18, 2023. Your fingerprints are on file in the district office. Motion by Tom. Second. Second by Heidi. All those in favor. Carry five zero. Entertained a motion to accept the resignation of Tanya Bound from her cafeteria position effective August 31st, 2023. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the probationary appointment of Tanya Bound as a full-time teacher aide effective September 1st, 2023. Your fingerprints are on file. Someone. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the probationary appointment of Christine Maury as a part-time teacher aide effective September 1st, 2023. Your fingerprints are on file.
So moved.
Motion by Peter.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the probationary appointment of April Andrews as a part-time teacher aide effective September 1st, 2023. Your fingerprints are on file. Someone. Motion by Heidi. Second. Second by Jen. All those in favor. Entertained a motion to accept the resignation, Juling Miler from her teacher aide position effective August 31st, 2023. Someone. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion that upon recommendation of the superintendent to approve the appointment of Julie Miler, who is certified at Level 1 area, be hereby appointed to the position of teaching assistant tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September 1st, 2023 and anticipated to end on August 31st, 2027. Her salary for the 23-24 school year is based on stepped on the teaching assistant salary schedule in the teacher's contract. Someone. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to accept the resignation of Amy Ruggles from her teacher aide position effective August 31st, 2023.
So moved.
Motion by Peter.
Second.
Second by Tom. All those in favor. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion that upon recommendation of the superintendent, the board approves the appointment of Amy Ruggles to be certified at Level 1 area and is hereby appointed to the position of teaching assistant tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September 1st, 2023 and anticipated to end on August 31st, 2027. Her salary is based on the teaching assistant.
So moved.
Peter, second. Second by Heidi. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the appointment of Tenley Cozy, who is certified at Level 1 area, is hereby appointed to the position of teaching assistant tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September 1st, 2023 and anticipated to end on August 31st, 2027. Her salary is. Someone. Motion by Heidi. Second by Tom. Or is that a vote?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
We can use it however you want.
Okay, we'll take it as a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the probationary appointment of Andy Isom as a full-time bus driver effective September 31st, 2023. Your fingerprints are on file in the office.
So moved.
Peter.
Second.
Second by Tom. Wasn't he already a bus driver?
So he was, I think he was either full-time. I'm not sure if it was a retirement, but he was.
He was in the resignation.
Resignation. And then he came back as a substitute, but basically he's been substituting.
Every day.
Every day, so.
Might as well be.
Yeah. So he said, "But maybe full-time again." Yes. So.
Perfect.
Yes. Yeah. It's great. We're, we're glad to have him. The kids, he likes, likes the kids and the kids like him, so. Yeah, and he's been thriving, but he was technically subbing paradise.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the probationary appointment of Brian Schuman as a custodian effective September 20, 2023. Mr. Schuman is required to take the civil service test for this position and be reachable on the list. So moved. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Carry five zero. Entertained a motion to rescind the appointment on July 13th, 2023 of Carol McBee as the seventh grade class advisor. Someone. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Tom. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Todd DeSoto as the seventh grade class advisor for the 2023-24 school year. This appointment is in the capacity of employees at will and does not guarantee employment for the entire season or term. Therefore, pay may be prorated for time work. Someone. Heidi.
Second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Carol McBee as the yearbook advisor for the 2023-2024 school year. Again, this appointment is in capacity of employees at will. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Lori Franhofer as the Spanish club advisor for the 23-24 school year. Again, in the capacity of employees at will. So.
Second.
Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Wendy Carey as the home events coordinator for the 2023-24 school year. And again, this appointment is in the capacity of employees at will. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry. Did I brush that?
No, I just was curious, what does home events coordinator mean?
So that is the person who arranges for chaperones. So primarily it's a winter sport, usually.
I just wasn't sure what it was.
Yeah. For the, for the events, does the programs, those types of things. So it does fall into the football, the home football game, but primarily it's just the winter.
I just was curious what it is.
Inside, we usually have chaperones in, in the building.
Thank you.
I did brush that, I apologize.
No, it's fine.
So if we do that again, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you.
I was in favor, I just didn't. I wanted to clarify what it was.
Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Anna Courtney as the 11th grade class advisor for the 23-24 school year. And again, the appointment is in the capacity of employees at will.
Second.
Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Blake Rich as the co-coach for modified field hockey for the 23-20. We'll make that the 24 school.
You wanted it for a while.
You did. And again, this appointment is in the capacity of employees at will. Someone. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Mark Eastman as the modified boys' basketball coach for the 23-24 school year. And again, the appointment is in the capacity of employees at will.
So.
Second by Peter. And by Heidi. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Heidi, would you do the next?
I will. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Peter Donegan as a volunteer girls' basketball coach at all levels for the 2023-2024 school year. This is at the capacity of at-will employees.
Now, how many levels?
He just volunteers at the different levels, goes in and works with the different coaches. I know you guys talked to a couple of them, worked on his defense.
Modified JV varsity anyways.
Just a lecture on.
Yeah, that's great. He's important.
It's been a long discussion on this one.
Jen, motion, and Peter, second. All those in favor. Motion passes four zero.
They've lost him for another winter.
There you go.
Bag goes by the front door. You know it's time.
Getting close to the end. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Bridget Thomas to mentor Erin Har. Teacher mentor for the teachers year, effective September 1st, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor. Carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the appointment of Anna Courtney to mentor Samantha Core, teacher mentor for new teachers to 0 to 2 years effective August 17th, 2023. So moved. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. All those in favor. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve Miriam Nestle to teach a sixth class effective for the 23-24 school year compensation per, per the WADA contract. Someone.
Second.
And by Jen. You wouldn't have any questions?
I read that completely wrong when I read that earlier. I was, I was thinking sixth grade class, not sixth class. She was in high school, I assumed. So, let me clarify that.
Actually, she's teaching second grade, that's her extra.
Thanks.
She's going down to elementary.
Right.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Okay, now we're finished with personnel.
That's what we do.
So it revolves.
Beginning of the year.
Yeah.
Last.
But now we're still on action items. So entertain a motion to approve the following change to the 23-24 school calendar. October 18th will be amended from a half-day parent-teacher conference professional development day to a full instructional day. And October 17th will be amended from a full instructional day to the half-day parent-teacher conference professional development day. Someone. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second. Will we? You need a second.
Second.
Yeah. And the Y.
So, well, we had a lapse in communication and October 18th is picture day. So it would, we can't get it all done in a half day, so we just swapped.
And so all the half-days are pre-K through 12?
Yes.
Okay.
Previously, for a few years, they were not. But, you know, we really could use the time to work on curriculum.
Oh, I just assumed that they were only elementary, so that's very true.
And I, I, I hope that might help some families who sometimes depend on some of the older siblings in high school to watch the younger. And I think hopefully that might help a little bit.
So if you have older siblings.
Yeah, but they've still got the sports practices and stuff to figure out, so that. Helps, but doesn't help.
Well, that is a little, you're getting towards the end. You might be getting in a little bit in the limbo period. I don't know exactly when, probably sectionals, but I'm not sure.
Without kids in school, I don't.
Is that an after-school program available on half-days?
Um, I, that's a good question. I would think, I don't know. We're also having a little communication. Charles trying to, they've been going, missing each other. So we're trying to get a sense for where they are in terms of getting that started. It's all good question, I don't know.
What's all regular season?
It's all, yeah. Yeah.
Don't have day starting at lunch instead of finishing at lunch.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. If there are no objections, I would like to combine the next five items.
Absolutely.
Entertained a motion to accept bond donation. The donation from the Washington County Sheriff's Department of 10 stock of lead kits. The donation of 20 backpacks with student school supplies from Hill &amp; Marks. Donation of student school supplies from Deborah Craig. The donation of student school supplies from Hebron Church Mission. And the donation of $500 for student school supplies from the First United Presbyterian Church Mission Fund. So moved. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. And in doing that, Gina, I just wanted to check, we, how do we acknowledge?
So thank you notes will go out. Usually the, the elementary office, I almost think has already put thank you notes out to re-up.
Okay, great.
And I will make sure that.
As I would like to thank any, all of the organizations and individuals who, who did make donations to that benefit, our students, so that I'm much appreciated.
That's very nice.
Make sure that they are acknowledged. Entertained a motion to approve the ASAP Fitch Memorial Scholarship funded by the Cambridge-Salem 481 Charities. This will be a $300 cash award to a graduating senior who will be enrolled in secondary education with the intention of a major within the STEM fields of study. Someone. Motion by Heidi. That's a nice little.
Yes.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the Thomas Nelson Wood III Memorial Scholarship. This will be a $100 cash award in honor of Tom Wood, beloved teacher and administrator of Salem Central School for 29 years. It will be awarded to a graduating senior who embodies the attributes of diligence, leadership, and overall good moral character. The student must be seeking a college program or employment in the fields of education, agriculture, or political science. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Jen. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. For those people who remember Mr. Wood, it's a well-deserved honor for him. Entertained a motion to approve the building use request from the PTA for their monthly meetings. They're asking for the use of the cafeteria from 5:30 to 7:30 on the listed dates. The PTA is flexible with location if conflicts arise. So moved. By Peter. Heidi. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carry five zero. Entertained a motion to approve the new sports merger between Salem Central School and Cambridge Central School for modified girls' soccer effective for the 23-24 school year.
Second.
Second by Jen. And that is ongoing. Who's the host team? Did it come here or did he go there or how does that work? Just curious.
And what was happening previously? It was just Salem had their own.
Yeah. Yes, so neither one, that we were both struggling for numbers. Cambridge actually reached out to us. So the, because it's for non-varsity, the deadlines are not strict as long as there's agreement on both programs. As far as I know, Miriam Nestle is the coach. So they, so they're sending, I believe they're sending kids over here. But I know with soccer, we're trying, I'm not sure about at the modified level, to be honest. I think that's a question we could talk to Mr. Moore about next time. But I think there is, you know, the attempt to try to share locations for home games. I'm not sure because the schedule was already made. Probably not this year for the modified, but I know in the future that would be a possibility.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.[1728.18] All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to approve the budget transfers as presented. So moved. Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Peter. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. Entertain a motion to approve Durant Incorporated to transport one student from their home to St. Catherine's on Monday and return them back to their home on Friday for three hundred and fifty-eight dollars for one full day, half price for Monday AM, and half price for Friday PM. This will be starting September sixth and conclude on about, on or about, either June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, or until such date prior to June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, when transportation is no longer required.
This, this thing.
Second.
Yeah. And Catherine's is in.
Down. It's either Albany or Schenectady. So it's a, it's a private, private residential facility for, so out of district placement for students.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. All right. At this point, I think you did it. Thank you very much for your patience. At this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Adams for discussion of our new referendum.
Right. So just up to you, up today. We are in the process of our timeline for a vote on Tuesday, December fifth, two thousand twenty-three. There's an elementary concert on that day. I feel as if we should try to be closer to the beginning of December. Further we get into December, we have, there's a lot of conflicts with holiday activities and possibly weather. So, you know, that's a day where there'll be a lot of people coming into the building as well in the evening. So there won't be a need for two trips for, for those people who would be coming to the concert. As we've been posting, October eleventh will be a special meeting of the Board of Education at that meeting. So Barclay Damon is the company that the bond council works for. That is not a person. I know that is a little confusing. But there'll be the bond council. We deal with two or three people there. So I'm not certain who is coming. And I do apologize. I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting that Karen is, was not available tonight as well. But, so the bond council will come and give an overview to the board and to the public who was here just about how the financing of the bond works, what the impact of the, proposed impact to the taxpayer would be, what our debatable portions are, and speak a little more about the debt schedule and how the cash flows in and out and how we pay back those bonds. So also, and Mosaic Architects will be here and Schoolhouse Construction. They won't, per se, do a presentation because right now we're dealing with a proposed list of items. However, they will be here. You know, we have two new board members who do not have the opportunity in the past. Some of this work has been in discussion with the board for over a year. And I wanted to have the opportunity for anyone on the board, including our new members, to ask some additional questions about the work. And we did have a few additional items on the list. So for people in the audience, there was a list. We did have a list, right? So already has one. So I'm not going to necessarily read through it. The two items at the end in red are, were added since the last discussion. Replacement of cafeteria doors, that was my omission. That was something that was to be done in the last project. I don't know the details of why it was not done. There might have been some holdup with the materials or the work. And then the thought was that it would be a standalone shortly thereafter, but the bid came in so high, it was really quite extraordinary, the cost compared to if we would have embedded into a project. And both Mosaic and Schoolhouse recommended that we put it into the additional work we were doing, which is now pushing forward into, into this referendum. So that was my error. I forgot to add that in. And we were having, I was in the cafeteria shortly after we went through this list. And I thought, I forgot to put that on there. I think we just had a big rainstorm and the water came in underneath. So it was a good reminder. Yes, yes. And construction oven improvements to sidewalks and related work. So I think there, there's been some discussion of that when we're looking at working on the front of the building, by the flagpole, the entrance near the nurse's office and my office, kind of doing some repair work. The columns are rusting. I don't know if they're going to need to be repaired or replaced. And there's some, I think, they, they suspect there's maybe some, some issues with that little roof that are causing the water to leak down into the columns and/or the ice or and or snow. The other, so those sidewalks and those front, I think we've talked about that, are in need of repair and or replacement. Also, Mr. Grainey and I were speaking recently and when we were out at the beginning of the year, you know, one of the things is that a lot of, some of our kids that get dropped off with elementary, the older students, and they walk and they end up to take a shortcut walking through the grass along the side of this building. And then in the winter, they're not able to do that. So then in our sidewalk on East Broadway ends, there's no sidewalk that goes up Warren Street. So I don't think it'll be a very large expense when, you know, when they're already here doing a lot of other site work. But looking at the possibility of, of having a sidewalk that kind of cuts from the front in East Broadway up and or over to Warren Street. So I also think there's some potential depending on where we place that sidewalk. But Warren Street coming up, so for anybody walking across from, sometimes kids cross the street, get dropped off at the courthouse, and they're walking up in the road. So, so there's discussion about that. And then also, I think when they're doing the drop-off loop, when they design the drop-off loop in the back, some of the preliminary discussions were to have then a sidewalk along, there are those telephone poles that are there along the road where we're doing the drop-off, not necessarily in the corner. But I'd like to have a sidewalk. I think it would be the right thing is to have that connect over to the drop-off loop as well. So just some variety of, you know, so that we can.
Beated in the winter time.
Right, right. And keep it maintained. So those were the two things that were not very clear. And, and if you'll notice in those bold, two bold areas, and the, for each of those sections, it says modifications, improvements, alterations to district buildings and property to address safety, security, ADA accessibility, including but not limited to. And then same down here for the infrastructure changes, including but not limited to. So this allows for us, not that, you know, we would go rogue, but sometimes things come up in the course of the project that it, that something may be needed that falls within this scope or a similar work. And this, you know, gives us the flexibility to do that. And the other disclaimer, I would like to say probably every time, because I know in the past, there, there were some questions about why some things were, were not included. We may or may not, at the time of the project, if the bidding process is quite high above the projected, so inflationary costs, or we run into contingency issues and we run out of contingency funds, we may need to take something off the list. Or it may just not be the right time to do that, or we may no longer need to do that. So for example, I've had a few people ask me a question about EV buses. I know that is controversial to some people. A lot of people have concerns about whether or not we should or can do this. The thought about the EV buses, as I've discussed before, is it doesn't mean that we're absolutely doing it. It doesn't mean we're going to lay the conduit. But if we're on track and the mandate is still in place and the timeline is as it is now, we would want to lay the conduit. If we're doing work possibly over in that parking lot over by the bus, bus garage or laying parking lot behind the bus garage, it does not make sense then to have to rip that up in a couple of years.
To lay it down.
And.
Even if it stays empty.
Right. And so, but, you know, if they push the timeline out five or 10 years, maybe it isn't the right time to do it. So we may not, we may take that off the list. So there are times, same with the connection for the sewer, right? This is, right now, they're on track, the town's on track for a vote.
On track.
As, as on track.
On track. It's on track to have a vote, correct, in the, in the.
The, the comment I was gonna make on this, that it's important that we do our best to hold to this date for the, for the, for the vote. Because right now, the sewer vote is tentatively looking at January. So we'll have the regular election November, this referendum in, in December, the sewer vote in January.
Time, yeah. Timelines will sync up nicely. So I think.
You gotta get the two, too close together.
Right. Yeah, that could cause some confusion. And, yeah. So I, I just wanted to be clear that there are times where sometimes, and I know maybe it was not necessarily discussed or communicated well in the past. So I think we've heard that. So if we do make changes, we'll be certain to communicate that and keep the public up to date.
So we're gonna learn more about the bidding process in the special meeting? Is that what you said?
Uh, the bidding process, the bidding process will, so we probably would not have discussion about the bidding process further down. So tentatively, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. So I'll work with Mosaic. And if the, as we seem to be moving forward, then we'll start getting a timeline for after the vote. But tentatively, I've been told that it will take most of next year to be working on the plans, drawing up all the specifications, the plans, the applications that are necessary and submitted, getting, getting all of our approvals. Then, you know, the construction companies, so Schoolhouse will come because they'll answer questions about the, they're, they're familiar with the building. They've done work. They've been, been working on this building for, for several years. And so if there are questions about the roofs or different things, the greenhouse, those types of things, they'll, they'll, they, they'll be able to answer those questions. They really won't formally come into the process until next year, probably late fall, November, December, when we're getting ready to bid. And my understanding is tentatively, and again, I'll get you more of a timeline, that tentatively, we would look to go to bid probably early in two thousand twenty-five, yes.
Yep.
And poss, and hope to break ground initially in summer of two thousand twenty-five. The work may need to go over two summers because a lot, the majority of this work is work that can, it's very difficult to do with students in the building. So twenty-five and twenty-six.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Good thing we have you locked up for five years.
Anybody else have any other questions?
And then I did also just include the, you know, just kind of a, a thought. Gina has been working on kind of locking me in with a few local entities and looking at possibly going to Hebron and Shushin Firehouse for people who may not be able to make it to Salem for community presentation. That November second for the community presentation is tentative. I'm just waiting to get confirmation back from Schoolhouse and Mosaic. We would definitely, it would be nice to have them here to answer questions if they're not. No, I think at least at the community presentation, again, we may, we would probably have a question and answer period. So we'll, we'll kind of take that as it comes. But this is the tentative timeline right now.
Any other further? It's opportunities for the board to be heard. I just wanted to say, people may have found one of these I picked up at the last conference that I went to. I had enough of the social media reference guide to get one for everybody. But I got there late to the table. I didn't realize. There are other ones. So if, if anybody is interested, we are having somebody from this, but for our workshop. And if people are interested, I can ask them to bring additional copies. There's one on email usage, executive session, effective school meeting guide, and public comment. So if people are interested, I can see if I can get extra copies.
I'd be interested.
I did have this one up with this one, so.
You would have been weighed down.
My bag was overloaded. So. Does anybody else have any other updates or anything to share?
I would, I would, went to a place Sunday and I loved it. I would love to have been able to, you know, brought students there if I was engaged in school. But I thought it was amazing what the Constitution meant to me. What a great show. It could be really amazing for, for say, your class of seniors who are trying to be more engaged in the community, who are trying to work on different things. It's just a really neat show. It closes on October eighth.
Wow. Tell Mr. Bork to keep an eye if they do that again.
Yeah. It's a capital word for it, Peter. My wife spoke as a panel expert on the Constitution and it was neat. It was a neat thing.
That's a nice venue for something like that. You're close to the performance area. So.
Neat venue.
And then we do have our listed names to remember. There are many things going on at school.
Is there a fall concert date?
Which is, that's usually.
The night of the half day, no?
Yeah. They decided that the other night at the advisory meeting. I did remember that. So.
We're welcome.
Or nine, Mr. Eastman. And that would be, is that, that's for the high school? Let's see, maybe it's a joint, because I think they're all short little performances.
It's usually high school, middle school, one in October, and then they do Christmas high school, and then the elementary just then.
Yeah.
Couple elementary. I just know that usually it's in that.
Double check with Mr. Eastman.
That usually catches me off guard because, you know, you have to have black and white. You have to make sure everything's.
I know. There was one that they, was that the one, there was one that was on the night of the board meeting.
One of the board meetings, it was a conflict, so. And we have our board decree on the board. There's the special meeting on the eleventh and a regular meeting on the eighteenth.
And Queensberry Hotel on Thursday.
Yes. Yes, we're going. Bill Daggett, Mr. Phil Daggett is a very esteemed educator and speaker and presenter. And he'll be speaking at the Adirondack Area School Boards Association. And Peter and Tom are joining me there for the presentation. And then they are also, Bill Daggett is going to come back and present to the superintendents and principals. He's gonna have a couple three to four thirties. It's a little challenging to have all of our principals leaving before their thirty deciles. So we're gonna work for, we're gonna get an opportunity. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the Queensberry, I'm going for the.
That sounds good.
Yeah, they have a great, so it is, it is, it's good.
At this point, I'd like to open up the. Is anybody here who has anything to share with the board or questions or concerns? Um, I think we should have a separate session.
Yes.
Entertain a motion to move to executive section for the purpose of discussion of collective negotiations with the Washington Academy, the Association.
So moved.
Motion by Peter. Standing by Tom. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carried five zero. You don't anticipate any action?
No action.
No action after.
We could go across the hall while that one is Eastman. He'll have time to clean up and we can get going and.